Good evening and welcome to the June 23rd, 2025 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross? I am here. Councilmembers Washington and Christensen have requested to be excused, absent from tonight's roundtable. Is there a motion excusing both Councilmember Washington and Christensen?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson and second by Councilmember Cotton. Is there any discussion?
Can odd-numbered seats get the next one off?
All those that approve, say aye.
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 Any disapprove, say no. And the motion passes and both Councilmember Washington and Christensen are excused absent. We now move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda, which is strategic plan update by Burt Consulting. Councilmember, I have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And it's unanimous and the agenda is approved. So tonight, we will welcome Burt Consulting to provide the strategic plan update. We have Brian Murphy and Maddie Imel from Burt. Then we will turn it over to them.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, very pleased to be with you all this evening and share an update on the strategic planning process and kind of catch you up as to where we are in that process and also share some information that we've collected from a review of some data, city plans and conversations with city staff. We'd like to walk through that with you. We understand you haven't had much time with that material, if at all, before we present some of the highlights. Be glad to take your questions and sort of, you know, move back and forth throughout the discussion and throughout the presentation to identify topics of interest to you all. So we'll just lay the groundwork a little bit here before going into the content. So the city effectiveness assessment is a way to look pretty holistically at what a city does and how a city operates and gain a baseline understanding, a lot of which will be very familiar to council. This is probably information you've seen before, but part of our effort here is to pull it all together in one place and help level set both for council members, also for ourselves frankly, as we begin the planning process, and then for members of the community that are also following along and want to see this information. I will stress that, and I'll show this again on the schedule, that this is only one input into the planning process. We are midway through community engagement. We're doing a survey as well. We'll be getting more input from council and from staff. So this is just one form of input and it focuses really on numbers and existing city plans. So it might be the less or the least rich element that will come forward in the strategic planning process. So we are here in June. We last met with you all on March 28th there at Meadowbrook Farms and had a conversation about the desired future of the community, various topics of interest for council in the planning process. We've been working on the city effectiveness assessment since then and also pretty busy on the engagement side. So there on the bottom left, you can see we've helped inform the survey that's out through the National Community Survey and they'll be doing a statistically valid sampling of Snoqualmie residents. There's also an opportunity for residents to join and share their points of view, even if they don't get that random digit call when that window opens up. My colleague Maddie and our other colleague Issa have been doing a number of discussion groups with various groups. So the business community, downtown residents, human services providers, seniors and others, as well as some targeted interviews. They were also at the splash pad opening. And then this Thursday, Maddie and a colleague Juan have a very busy Thursday. They'll be at the big truck event. They're holding an older adults focus group at the Y and then here at City Hall, a forum for downtown residents. So we've really taken, you know, the input that council shared at that first kickoff as to who we want to hear from in this process and are trying to cast both a wide net and allow input from a variety of Snoqualmie residents and business owners and also do some really targeted outreach into those particular groups. So in July and August, we'll be finishing that effort and we're very much looking forward to coming back with council on August 15th for a three-hour retreat. And that's shown here on the graphic. That is really much more of a holistic presentation of what we've learned in the process. So we'll be weaving together the information we'll share tonight, that we're previewing with you tonight, as well as more specific findings from the engagement. You're not going to hear much about the engagement tonight because we're really just partway through that process. So let me pause and see if there's any questions here about our process, where we are, the work we've been doing. There's a lot of information contained in the city effectiveness assessment. You'll get a chance to look at this in more detail. We've had some opportunity to work with staff on this material, but not all staff have seen all this work and everything in here is subject to revision and I'd say both for correction and also amplification. And so we'll come back to this content when we meet in August. And our hope tonight is to review some of this baseline. Maddie and I are going to share some of the highlights and takeaways that we saw. I think there's about 30 slides. We're not going to touch on all 30 and some topics we'll touch on extremely briefly or even go back if council has interest in that. So our focus or our approach rather is going to be to hit some highlights and share with you our key takeaways. And we're really looking for takeaways that are actionable and that will help inform the strategic plan. There's lots of interesting analysis we could do, but we really want to focus on kind of the items that will add value in the strategic planning process. And as we go, we'd love to hear your questions and your takeaways as well and we'll add that to the list that we go into. So I'm going to start with just some broad context. I know it's familiar history for you all, but I think it's an important part of the Snoqualmie story and that's looking at that population growth of the community. So that flat line, which at least at this distance looks flat from 1990 to 2000 and then that upward march in population. So the city through Snoqualmie Ridge, Snoqualmie Ridge II, those developments have led to a huge amount of population growth that is really now flattening off. And so from a community fabric point of view, that's a pivot or a change in sort of the community context. And it also has a significant impact on the city's fiscal status. Throughout that growth period, you were seeing sales tax on new construction. You were seeing an increase in your property taxes and now a lot of that's going to slow down. And so thinking about a maturation of the community and an opportunity to knit together folks on the ridge and folks downtown, that was a theme that came out of the council retreat back in March. And also a need to focus on what are the right services and what's the right sustainable revenue source and costs in terms of service delivery as you continue to move into the future. The chart on the bottom right here shows the population, sorry, the median adjusted household income for communities in the Snoqualmie Valley. And it's clear that Snoqualmie on average is a wealthy community, but as we'll note later in the conversation, that median or that average can really hide some real need in the community as well for human services and housing challenges and the like. So we'll come back to look at that in more detail and not just sort of look at the average number here. The location of Snoqualmie, I think, is also pretty fundamental to your community. If location is anything, it really is part of our destiny. It helps sort of shape your opportunities from an economic development perspective. We're out here, you know, away from the urban area. So fully 92% of workers or Snoqualmie residents rather who work are traveling outside Snoqualmie for their employment. And then of the folks who work in Snoqualmie, almost 90% are coming in from elsewhere in the region. So you can see here though, the origins and destinations of those workers. And I think your location does mean that in terms of economic development, you have some opportunities to serve the local population, but a bit more challenge in serving as a retail center or as an employment center because folks are less likely to travel out to the area where you're located, particularly in terms of shopping with the outlets in your neighboring community. There may be some challenges here in retail growth. So let's go ahead and talk a little bit about housing.
So the next two slides here summarize some of your housing challenges. As I'm sure you are aware, the King County Growth Management Planning Council recently approved the city of Snoqualmie's request to reduce its 20-year housing growth target from 1,500 to 719 units. So we know that this is kind of actively changing, but really this slide just recognizes those capacity challenges. So half of the land in Snoqualmie is constrained by critical area regulations and most of the remaining residential land is either built out or located within residential owner associations, which limits opportunities for some increasing density, which came up at our March meeting talking about possibilities to add accessory dwelling units onto existing land. The chart on the right here shows completed housing units by type and year. So seeing that that growth has slowed with multifamily housing in 2021, 196 units being completed. So we'll talk a little bit about the other developments that are happening in Snoqualmie, but this just represents the housing units that have been completed and seeing that growth slowed down. So when it comes to housing affordability, the bottom chart here shows the proportion of households by cost burden and tenure. So really the takeaway from this chart is that for renter households, 33% are cost burdened. So that means they're spending 30 to 50% of their income on housing costs, which can be really challenging for folks. So like Brian said, on average, the median household income in the city of Snoqualmie is quite high, but housing costs are also incredibly high. And because of those housing costs, people may be choosing to leave the city involuntarily and living in more affordable places. And so we'll also talk about that when we get to the human services slide, but this just represents some of those housing challenges and housing affordability indicators for This slide really represents the employment history. So here it shows the 2023 employment numbers at about 5,500 jobs, also recognizing that there's some anticipated job growth for Snoqualmie. So as King County has its planning targets for both housing, they also put out planning targets for jobs. So their employment target for Snoqualmie is an additional 4,425 jobs, thinking for the next 20 years. And the chart on the right just kind of represents the change in employment. So that you can see that green bar is really an increase in service positions, whereas the blue bar on the left-hand side represents the decrease in construction positions over the last about 10 years. So again, we're talking about increasing growth with some developments happening in Snoqualmie, but some great employment changes over the last 10 years with some anticipated growth here as well. This really shows the pull factors for the city of Snoqualmie in the retail area. So at the top here, you have really accommodations, so Salish Lodge and the Snoqualmie Inn being two opportunities for that taxable retail sales. You also have food and beverage stores, sporting goods and Amazon included here as kind of being above that 1.0 pull factor. And it also shows the leakage here as well for other retail opportunities.
Yeah.
So just quickly to explain the way that works is if you're serving, if your pull factor is exactly 1.0, it means you're serving the equivalent of your population. So anything above one means that you're serving a larger population than the folks that live in your community. And below one indicates that, Maddie used the term leakage, it's a common term that say retail leakage is folks are leaving your community to make these purchases elsewhere. So one way to think about this is below or above one is a strength and below one is an opportunity, but we also have to think about like people's shopping patterns. And so, you know, some of this is happening through delivery. You can see that 459, the NAICS code includes Amazon. So some of this is delivery, even in furniture and home furnishings. I don't believe there's a furniture or home furnishing or appliance store in Snoqualmie. So some of that is happening, you know, through delivery. The categories down below, we might like to capture those, but folks may not be looking for those goods here in the city. So motor vehicles and parts are terrific from a fiscal point of view because they give very high fiscal returns to the city, but it's unlikely that you'd see an auto dealership locate in Snoqualmie given presence of all those auto dealers on the east side. So when we talk about economic development, we need to think about sort of what's the market opportunity in the region.
So question of, but-
Your pro tem Holloway?
Doesn't the inclusion of Amazon or at least not the separation of them out kind of skew the metrics? I'm concerned they're sales tax-based, but they don't, real estate, other things they don't contribute into, yet they do ride on our roads and do demand some other services in the delivery of their goods.
You're receiving sales tax for those goods, but you're not receiving anything like, you know, like utility taxes or other things, right? So they are using your roads and you can see that relative to sort of the normal population worth you're selling a bit more. So I would think your residents, because of the higher income, are buying a bit more on Amazon. So yeah, it's not coming out a huge benefit to the city and there is some infrastructure costs for that. Please do interrupt with questions. We're throwing a lot at you and moving through pretty quickly. And again, you'll have more opportunity to sit with us and ask us more probing questions, I'm sure, next time we get together, but feel free to interrupt, please.
In March, we talked about some exciting developments coming to the city and really there's, we were talking about housing challenges, we're talking about economic development and there's many pending development and tourism opportunities here that includes opportunities for office space, retail, housing and tourism. So those are summarized here.
Was there any discussion with staff about for this section, the possibilities for UGA or expanding UGA or incorporating UGA?
Or annexation.
Annexation, yeah.
Yeah. We did talk briefly with staff about the possibility of annexing an additional element to the business park that would include some economic development opportunities, but know that those conversations are in development and that the city had made a request for bringing in area into its UGA and was denied previously. So conversations, we need to continue with staff, but there are opportunities there as well.
I think that's something as we get moving to discussion more of strategies, we might come back to that and talk about your land use, your land base. So we're going to change here a little bit and shift from thinking about land use and your position in the overall market and talk more about your fiscal position and the services that are provided by the city, recognizing that economic development can be an opportunity to kind of affect your revenues as a city. So this is looking at a very high level at the city's expenditures over on the left and your revenues on the right. So as with other cities in the area, inflation has been real. It's been very significant in recent years and that's impacting the cost of providing services. The city's, you know, most of its expenses here, 53%, are wrapped around salaries and benefits. So there's a very much exposed to the high cost of inflation, particularly on the benefit side where the city's affected as well as folks like ourselves in a small business. So the other change that we're noting is that the completion of the contract services with North Bend, which will affect the city's, you know, ability to provide law enforcement, it won't affect the city's ability to provide services, but affects the coverage of some of those shared costs. So that's something that is going to be worked through upcoming staffing levels and upcoming service delivery. Over on the right, you see the revenue mix for the city. So strongly property tax, about 38% of the revenues are coming from property tax with another 15 from sales tax and some proactivity by council and support from voters with the passage of the TBD in January of 2024 and then the public safety sales tax in August of 2024. We also understand the city's looking at its fee structure to look at opportunities to capture revenue around those fees. And again, economic development is an opportunity to try to generate additional revenue for the city, which of course translates into services for your residents. And that's something that, you know, we can look at as we move forward and talk more about strategies. In terms of overall fiscal position, this is a chart that looks very similar for cities around Washington state. You're actually in a good position in that your revenues will exceed your expenditures until about 2029. So for structural reasons around the property tax limit, cities will see that sort of that cliff at some point in the future and being able to look out as far as 2029 means that you're in a good position and you have a reserve fund as well. But this is like something that we want to start to look ahead to and think about both your expenditures and your revenues and that conversation that we've talked about with your community about what services are important and how will you sustain those. And again, kudos to you all for doing the strategic planning and thinking before, you know, you're at a crisis point. I won't speak long about this, but it's just sort of an overview of your operating budget over a two-year period showing, you know, sorted sort of by function from large to small, both in terms of costs and also FTEs. So some of the questions that we're asking when we go out to talk with residents and business owners is where they'd like to see enhanced services, where they feel satisfied with existing services. And I think even a point of conversation can be, are there areas where the city could think about diminishing services or redirecting services to have the most value to residents? And we'll be looking at the survey to help inform those conversations. I think the other note here is that you are a full-service city, right? With police and fire, emergency management and your utilities here provided by the city. So that is noteworthy and not the case for all cities. One more note here, as we look at a city's fiscal position, you know, one thing we're often looking for is are there unmet capital needs that the city's not preparing for? And we really did not find that to be the case here at all. You have a beautiful town, City Hall, and that's in good shape. There's not, you know, a maintenance barn or a maintenance facility that's in need of drastic repair that we know of. So your larger capital projects are planned around the town center improvement project, the community center expansion, which you're in discussion with, and then utility-related investments. So seems to us to be, you know, well-managed on the capital side as well with, without big concerns out there in the future.
So the city recently completed an update to its parks, recreation, open space and trails master plan, which has some pretty lofty and exciting goals, including continuing to invest in parks, making sure that all residents have access to the beautiful parks that you currently have, enhancing that community connectivity by potentially linking the citywide trail network and providing spaces for community gathering and much more. So these next two slides both summarize those goals and just really emphasize how residents value the natural environment of Snoqualmie and how they're very satisfied with the current level of services that the city offers. So this really summarizes that satisfaction on the top right and on the bottom right is a screenshot from that post-plan that really emphasizes the amount of access that city residents currently have. This slide tries to summarize the public safety departments and we'll continue to have more conversation with staff when it comes to priorities here, but just recognizing that having an overall feeling of safety was ranked number one as essential or very important by residents in the last survey from NCS. And that Snoqualmie is the fourth safest city in Washington. So some really great investment, both for police, fire and emergency preparedness that the city will continue to invest in and that it's important to residents. So the city has played a funder role when it comes to human services and has been quite generous in funding nonprofits in the area that serve both Snoqualmie residents and beyond. Currently, the city provides about $315,000 annually, which breaks down to $22.5 per capita. That is quite high and as we talk to human services providers, they recognize that the city has played a leading role in this space. We talked about how, you know, housing affordability, the high income in this area, those two things really meet when it comes to human services needs in this community. So while, you know, most people have a high quality of living, love living here, we recognize that this area is quite expensive. And so this table on the right shows the increasing signup rates for food benefits. So that's the 2020 to 2022 growth rate, which is at 42%. So a high increasing rate for some residents as they're experiencing challenges, meeting basic needs such as food and housing affordability. And we'll be able to share a lot more on the engagement side, but this slide really just summarizes your current activities when it comes to public communications and engagement. So recent citywide engagement projects through your past planning efforts, current communication channels and engagement methods that you use frequently. Yeah.
There's a question online from customer Watten.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to that slide on 24th, Snoqualmie, is that unincorporated as well or is this just within the municipal boundaries on the numbers for setting up for food benefits? I think that would be helpful to know.
That's a great question, councilmember, and we can follow up. This was from a study that Burt recently completed through the Snoqualmie Valley Community Needs Assessment, and I believe that that number is just for the city, but we'll make sure to double-check and correct that if that represents more than just the city.
Yeah, because there should be a separate breakout to make it more helpful for unincorporated King County because it may be skewing the numbers for Snoqualmie.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is our last slide and I just wanted to recap or we wanted to recap sort of our takeaways as we work through this and be a great opportunity to hear if there are any surprises in this information. If you have any questions, we can go back to some of the slides and also what your takeaways are. We don't at this point, you know, mean to be committing council to anything in particular. We're just gathering information as we go and really moving towards that August meeting where we'll be having, you know, more comprehensive discussion. But it's helpful to understand where you see, where you have interest or where you see needs in the community that we may want to focus on in the strategic plan. So quick recap, in terms of context, your community growth is slowing. Your location is both a strength and it's an asset in the access to the outdoors. It may be a constraint as well around employment and economic development. Your land capacity is also a constraint and as Councilmember Johnson said, there may be things you can do about that. The city's in a strong fiscal position, but it's, you know, it's also important to be managing that smartly as you have been to this point. Economic development could be important from a fiscal point of view, also from an employment perspective. You have a lot of folks who right now are traveling outside of the community for work and that's, you know, they may wish to work closer to home. It would also obviously reduce traffic if we could have more of a live- It would also obviously reduce traffic if we could have more of a live, work and shop sort of opportunity here in town. There, you know, we see a need to focus on workforce housing in particular when we look at the housing needs and talk with folks about, you know, where do they see gaps in Snoqualmie's housing currently? And, you know, again, this theme that while you're a wealthy community overall, human services needs and housing needs are real, they're significant and, you know, they're, it's important to not sort of lose that in the in the look at the average. So our takeaway is focused mainly, our personal takeaway is focused mainly on those topics, less on sort of land use, parks, public safety, public communications and engagement. But obviously, those are also important areas of focus and and do tie in to those other assets. So we have a little bit of time left with you. Would love to take questions, take your your observations or requests of us also as additional things that we research and learn and bring back to our next discussion in August.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so what's going to continue to happen for the foreseeable future is the cost will continue to go up. Whether we expanded our services or not, just inflation will happen. Cost of staffing will go up because wages keep going up to meet inflation, et cetera, et cetera. But there are limited opportunities in comparison for increasing our revenues. And whenever, I have this beautiful map of the city over here on the wall at City Hall. And every time I look over there, I just see so much potential for infill and to rethink a lot of how the bridge was developed. It's a long-term strategy, but I feel like that's kind of what a strategic plan is partly looking at is, what is the long-term strategy for meeting the needs of the future? And I think throughout the next couple of years, we should be looking at that. The lower we build in terms of how tall buildings are, the more spread out things get, the more expensive things get per household. So there's that.
I would state, we talked about the growth target and how we were able to reduce it from fifteen hundred to seven hundred and nineteen. But we're being told by PSRC that we, then a good portion of those need to be zero to thirty percent AMI. So are you seeing, are you seeing that that population? I guess in the valley, I mean, Carnation has like several hundred, they also need to build. You know, each each city is assigned quite a few housing in that area, in that percentage range. Are you seeing that population? There's very little in the workforce housing, like eighty percent and above or sixty percent above. We're almost at zero for those with the goals that they're providing. So you, but you mentioned you're seeing that we need workforce housing. So how do we, you know, address the the zero to thirty percent if you're, whether you're seeing it or not, I guess?
Yeah. It's a topic we're just learning about as well in the past couple of weeks about like the conversations that are happening with Snoqualmie and your targets. So we've been talking with staff some about that. I don't know that there's much more we can say tonight to help shine a light on that, but understand the question. And I think it's something we can spend more time on and dig into a bit more detail.
Right, because I know that you did the community needs assessment throughout the whole valley. So so if you can pull from that information, that would be helpful.
Great.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Well, when we're thinking about future land use, one of the things that we could consider is factoring in as we are supposedly required to, the thirty percent AMI households, but also the workforce housing, the sixty to eighty percent. My opinion, I think all the way up to one twenty is actually, if you're making one twenty, it's hard to afford to live in the city, honestly. But anyway, in that general range, make space for them as well. And if it just so happens that what actually ends up being built is the sixty to one twenty, well, then that's just the way the cookie crumbles. But we should make the capacity for all of that. And yeah, and whatever gets built ends up being the thing that actually ends up getting built.
Councilor Benson?
One of the ideas that's come forward in the last couple of years that is exciting is the encouragement of ADUs, which don't, you know, covenants, codes and restrictions of the ROA don't necessarily allow for that. I I I was realizing I don't know what percentage of Snoqualmie's population lives within an ROA and what percentage does not. You guys might have, might know the answer to that.
It's on the slide.
But 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 my real question is, when when the when the needs of the of the city and the needs of the ROA, which are both totally valid, conflict, is there a mechanism for for squaring that circle? If, to put it more bluntly, if there's a CCNR, a code that's that's written for the ROA that that the that the city government doesn't consider to be beneficial to the to the city, does it have any power to address that?
Do you know? To change the rules of our, sorry, just to clarify your asking.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is there, that would be a rub. And if there, is there any interaction there at all? Or does the ROA, which establishes the rules before people buy their houses and the people buy their houses, they like the rules maybe, and that's why they decided to join an ROA? But but I'm just, I'm just wondering if if there, if you know of examples where where the where cities and ROAs have been in disagreement about some of those things.
Off the top of my head, the only thing I can think of is that, and this is kind of decades ago information, if some ROAs, and I don't think this was here in Snoqualmie, but like other places, there would be like historic racism where there could be a covenant that says, you know, people of color are not allowed to purchase here. And because of laws, that's, you know, not enforceable. I don't know if in terms of ADUs were anywhere close to that. And those aren't, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but that's the the closest example I that I can think of off the top of my head. And I'd have to to research that more.
So there's Councilor Watten and then Councilor Johnson.
I want to help answer part of that question from Councilmember Benson. That would require state action to override HOAs, ROAs on those those covenants that disallow ADUs. And I believe it's it's come before the legislature, but it just hasn't had any legs yet. So that helps.
Councilor Johnson, thank you.
Yeah, I think that that could be our best path would be to advocate for the state legislature to take action on that particular item. Given their recent actions over the last few years on this very topic, it's possible that they're starting to get the appetite for it. Who knows? But, yeah.
To clarify, my 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 goal was not necessarily to advocate the overthrow of of the ROA or anything like of the sort. I was just curious about whether or not there was some mechanism, if there was any kind of dispute at any point.
Councilor Cotton?
I think to your point, the ROAs and HOAs are not sovereign nations. So there certainly has to be mechanisms available to, you know, kind of adjust things, especially in in the legal circumstances, as was described earlier.
Again, not necessarily to my point, but.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So, well, I I think if we were to pass an ordinance that says every lot over a tenth of an acre has to have a bird feeder for the sake of the wildlife, that would take precedence over contractual agreement on the ROA. It's not a, they're not a legislative body that is an agreement between the ROA and them is contractual. So it takes secondary to legislative. But having said that, I don't think that's the path we need to go. I haven't heard that the ROA is opposed to it. They may not be active or fully aware of the desire issue, whatever. And we ought to engage with them and have that conversation.
So first step?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Johnson?
We've talked before about some of the presumed optics that some people have around hearing a word like duplex. And it takes this image to mind and some people cringe at it. But there are some absolutely gorgeous duplexes out there that would fit in perfectly in the ridge aesthetically. And it's just a little bit about some level of public education in terms of bringing some folks on board who might otherwise be opposed. But as soon as people see them, they go, that's a duplex? Really? It doesn't even look like one, at least not in the classic sense. But anyway, we're getting slightly into the weeds here, but I guess just sort of that general idea of in order to tackle the affordable housing issue, which is just so huge, we're going to have to relook at the ridge. There's really not, there really isn't anywhere else to look.
I appreciate the conversation and hear a lot of interest in housing, affordable housing, workforce housing. And there's some complicated issues here in Snoqualmie that we can help shine some light on when we're better prepared in August to have that conversation more in depth. I've also heard some interest in land capacity, which is also complicated, I'm going to say, and economic development. Are there other topics that council would ask that we focus on when we meet again in in August?
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Consideration, you can always say no. So I'm looking, I'm thinking of three other metrics. One is, what is this, what is the salary shape of our citizens? So the income basis. But the other one is, what is the salary shape of the employment opportunities within the city? I'm concerned if we really focused in on just thirty thirty AMI, we don't have the employment opportunities for them. Okay, so I'm just, I'm immediately putting them in affordable housing and putting them on a bus with all the, you know, everything else. The third metric is is leak, retail leakage. So how much of that salary we talked about before, are we actually capturing in the retail here and thereby getting the tax benefit and everything else? How much of that salary is actually being spent external to us, although it is city resident salary? Or city resident salary from their employment too? I mean, that's a two, look at that on two different scales. Those might be interested in throwing in here and generating some thoughts. And we had leakage metrics at one stage in another study you may pull from.
Great, thank you, Councilmember.
Any other comments or questions?
Are we getting a copy of this?
Yeah, so I have a copy of it. I will be sending it to council tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
And obviously, it's structured more as a report almost than a presentation, so it will merit some deeper study. And feel free to share questions with Drew or Mike, and then we can help answer those when we meet with you next.
This is just kind of material I like to ruminate about and ask my family questions that they don't really want me asking them. What do you think of?
Try to get my family to explain it to me, too.
I might just pause briefly, Mayor, on next steps, if I could. Great. So I think we've noted this, that we'll be back with you all in August. We have about three hours mapped out, so we'll be reporting back on all of the community and stakeholder engagement. And really, like, I think that's going to be very helpful in this conversation because the numbers only tell part of the story, really. And these interviews and the survey will be much, much, much needed nuance in that.
We had to shut off your sound for the pledge, very concerned.
Did I go into the podium at all up there? Sorry, Brian.
We're saving money here.
That's what happens when I interrupt the mayor.
She's got a switch.
That's right. We'll be debriefing with Mike and meeting with staff because your staff are really close to these matters. And it's really important that we get their input and their insights as well. And we'll bring forward not just facts, figures and stories, but ideas of what the city might do for discussion in August. So I think that'll, again, be a very productive conversation.
Excellent. Great. Any other comments or questions? I think we're already, it's already on the schedule. Is it August fifteenth, something like that? Okay. Councilor Cotton?
Just one quick question, and whether or not this will even come out in the survey information that you're getting from the community is also focusing, while you mentioned things like, number one was their sense of safety. But is there other issues or concerns specifically that we can provide for them? Or the, besides the nature, which we don't really control, except that we're trying to enhance what's within our city for for our residents? But are there other things that are, you know, extremely important to them that maybe don't cost a lot that we can invest in too, so?
We have questions along just those lines in both the survey and the interviews where we're asking folks, what are the most important services the city provides? And also, in an open-ended way, what could the city do to enhance your your life, your business, your experience here in Snoqualmie? So I think all of that will be helpful.
Anything else? All right. So for the business to come before council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And then we have our council meeting following this at seven o'clock. So motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous that we are adjourned. Good evening, council. That brings us to a regular meeting of the city council. The time is now seven PM. Let the record show that all council was present, except for our councilmembers Washington and Christensen, who have been excused. Council, please stand with me to join me in the pledge of allegiance. And Councilmember Benson, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move. Second?
By Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the agenda passes unanimously. It is approved. Tonight, we have a public hearing for AB twenty-five dash zero six eight, which is a six-year transportation improvements program. And it looks like Dylan's going to check to see if there's anyone that has signed in. And there's, we have, no one has signed in. Public comment. So only persons appearing in person will have the opportunity to speak. And our city clerk has confirmed that we also have not received any online comments or emails or other type comments from the public. So with that, we're going to close our close the public hearing at seven oh two. At this time, we'll also provide time for residents to comment on items on the agenda. No online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. And since there is not anyone with public within the city council chambers, we will now close the public comment section. Moving on to consent agenda. It contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and June ninth, twenty twenty-five, and approval of the claims report dated June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Councilor Cotton and second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And the consent agenda has passed. Next item is community report. And the first item is the fire department annual report. We'll invite Chief Bailey to please introduce this item and provide the highlights. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council. I was just invited just to talk a little bit about the annual report for the fire department. It is in your packets for you to read in its entirety. And please, if you have any questions, reach out. Tonight, I just wanted to kind of highlight a few things that I think was important for you to see in the annual report. The first one just being, you know, there is a mess, in the beginning, there's a message from myself. But the the one thing I really wanted to say thank you or to highlight is the extra staffing that we had. I talked a little bit about in twenty twenty-four how we hired three firefighters to fill positions. But then I also talked just a little bit about the the foresight that the council had to give us those extra three positions that were desperately needed and I think are going to be really a good piece. that were desperately needed, and I think are gonna be really a, a good piece to our, our department this year to help lower some of the, the overtime rates and some of the, the stress that was put on the staff. Next, I wanted to talk about responses. So you can see there that we ended the year with one thousand seven hundred fifteen responses, which was just a little bit over a nine percent increase from last year. Shows a little bit about how, other than the year before, we dropped like thirty calls, which is pretty small amount. We're still on a steady increase in our call volume and our types of incidences there. As you can see, EMS is the major, very little fire responses that we have. One thing to point out is you might see that good intent calls are twenty-four percent, or excuse me. Yeah, the good intent calls are twenty-four percent, which is kind of high, but I just wanted to point out that that includes canceled calls. So anytime we start out on a response and then get canceled, that's categorized as a good intent call. And I think a lot of that has to do with how many times we get called out of the city, even though it counts as mutual aid. Most, a lot of times, we do get canceled en route because another unit becomes available. So I think that's probably the, the reason why you see that higher twenty-four percent for those good intent calls. The next one there, I just want to point out, I was just talking about it, was mutual aid. How that is, is thirty-one percent of our calls are outside the city, so aid given to other agencies. Fifteen percent are where agencies come into our city, whether it's for a large response or if they're covering us for maybe a simultaneous call or a second call. And then fifty percent, fifty-four percent are our calls that are just in Snoqualmie. That stayed about the same the last two years. It's gone up, and we are looking at different ways to kind of address that mutual aid and trying to make sure that we have units available more often in the city. Part of that is, goes back to what I said, having those extra three firefighters added. We're, we're exploring different ways to use our volunteers and try and split crews and have two vehicles available more often than we have in the past. So hopefully, we're gonna see maybe some of those numbers come down a little bit. Maybe the numbers might not change, but what will change is how many times that maybe if we do send a, a unit to North Bend, we still have a unit here in the city that can respond to a subsequent call, and I think that's really important. Next, we have on there training. Just to look at some of the numbers, we had over set, almost seventy-one hundred training hours between our volunteers and our career staff last year, which is an increase from last year, you know, still going up, and a lot of that just has to do with the staff we're adding, but also just really a, a focus on making sure that the crews spend time training and getting the, the training that they need. The, the next page there, it talks about what type of training we're doing. And the part I want to focus there is, is the work we're, is being done through the consortium. The consortium, again, is the, the group that mainly is made up of South County departments, but now it's really starting to grow in the North County, too. It's about thirteen hundred firefighters and covers about seventy-five percent of the fire departments in King County. What's really important about that is that not only does it, it take, frees up some, some time from some of our staff for creating that training, but really is it gives us a chance to, to work with other departments and subject matter experts of these other departments. I mean, we can't know everything, be experts on everything, so having an expert on fires, an expert on EMS calls, an expert on the special operations like swiftwater, rope, hazmat, all those different things where they can learn from these experts. They get a lot more knowledge. The crews are really getting some good training out of that, and the crews are enjoying going out and getting that block training. So I think part of the consort, being part of the consortium is really a benefit for the fire department. And we're looking to continue that partnership. You know, we have no, no desire to change it. And the consortium is still working on trying to bring, I mean, the ultimate goal is to get everybody in King County on the same page, so everybody's doing the same thing. So the work the consortium is doing is really good work. The next one there is just, you can see there's, it kind of goes over the classes that we taught, the public outreach that we had for the year. Thirty-three structured classes, over, well over fifteen hundred students, ninety-six hours of instruction. And then it goes on to talk about the different classes we've had. We are still trying to build up, unfortunately, because our staffing, we've had to back off on a little things, but we're still trying to do as much as we can. And we look to keep increasing that, get back up to where some of our totals were a couple of years ago. But we are still putting a focus on getting out and doing as much as we can in the public when we're allowed. So if you read that page, it just kind of goes over some of the, the different programs that we offer. One we're really proud of, proud of too, is the opioid class. Volunteer Angersano has done a great job of promoting that class, moving it forward and kind of being a front runner in that space across the county and the state, honestly. And so I'm really proud of that work that he's done, all in a, for the most part, a voluntary basis, is getting us to that point where we're, we're teaching those classes at the school, and also, starting in July, we're gonna be providing free Narcon, Narcan available at the station for anybody to walk in and, and get it. So that's another exciting program that we're, one of the first places that is doing that. Speaking of the volunteers, just to highlight some of the numbers that they, they do for us, they really provide a, a great service. They're one, we're one of the last departments in King County. I think there's only one other one that still has volunteers, and they're not accepting anymore. So I think it's really important that we, we still have that resource. Talks about how many hours that they put in, just under four thousand hours, and then two hundred and eighty-one duty shifts, five hundred and thirty responses, two hundred and fifty-five drill nights, and three hundred and nineteen community events. That's just a huge number when we're talking about a volunteer. This is somebody, they have their normal job, and then this is something else that they're doing. So I think it's really important just to highlight that we couldn't do it without, we couldn't do this without them. And so that's just a really important resource for us. Lastly, emergency management. This podium's wood, so we'll go ahead and knock on it, you know, twenty twenty-four, we didn't have any full activations for the EOC. We did have some partial activations, which really, partial is myself, the city administrator, being aware of what's going on, watching, take, for example, flood event, watching the water, making sure all of the city staff is aware, giving them updates, saying, hey, be ready, we might have to open floods, expected to be this high. Really just be on a heightened sense of awareness to see if we need to jump to that full activation mode. So we had a couple of those having to do with floodwater, some of the, the snow that we had, windstorm, but again, nothing that ever got close to a, a full activation needed. Some of the major accomplishments were just working on getting the EOC upgraded, brought up to some current, some of the equipment in there, some of the radio equipment, bringing that up to where it needs to be kind of reformulating and getting it back up to speed, as well as getting the CCAST group, which is our radio communication group, and then the, the CERT group, trying to get those back up and running again to where we'd like them. The last two pages just talk about what we did last year, some of the accomplishments we had, some of the big ones, obviously, you know about the accreditation, adding the firefighters, hired a deputy chief, onboarded a couple more EMS volunteers, and completed our strategic plan. Those are some of the big highlights of what we did in twenty-four. And then what we have going in twenty-five, we're still looking to increase in those EMS volunteers higher. I don't know if we'll make it to twenty by the end of the year, because it always seems like when we add some, we get some subtracted, but we're still working on trying to bring that level up to, the goal is twenty. We obviously hired our, our, the three firefighters. Looking at, again, trying to, when we have available, availability, to get into that wildland space and kind of looking at how we can maybe enhance the city's response to wildfires. Our new engine, which we have, you know, we had the celebration just a couple of weeks ago. We're really hoping to have it on the road by the end of the summer. We really, where we're at now is we gotta get it outfitted with our equipment, transfer one from the other, which takes, takes some time to wire it, and then we also have to do some training on it. So hopefully, the goal is by the end of the summer to have it, everybody trained on it and on the road for calls. For the EOC, we're looking at, which we're, we have another exercise next Monday for the department heads, but we're really working on getting the EOC up and running. I mean, I'm confident if something happened tomorrow, we'd be able to handle it, we're ready to go. But we really want to enhance that and, and make sure that we're in, increasing our abilities. So we are gonna hold some trainings throughout this year. That one on the thirtieth, and then near the end of the year, we're gonna have a full-blown exercise, which as the council, you'll be invited to watch or participate in. And that's just kind of a, a quick overview of what we have going. Again, like I said, it's in your packet. I'd be more than happy to meet with you to talk about anything, if you have any questions or if there's any, any questions tonight. You know, our department has done some really good work in twenty-four. I'm proud of the group that we have. And we're continuing that in twenty-five and, and looking forward to continue that process.
Councilor Cotton?
Thanks, Chief. A lot of accomplishments. And I just did want to comment that while you talk about the training consortium, this is not just our folks traveling down to the training facility for them. I've been out on both the Middle Fork and the North Fork, and all of a sudden, I hear voices, and here comes like twenty firefighters in, you know, doing swiftwater training. And, you know, in, in full gear and stuff like that. So it's, they're coming, they're coming out here, taking the opportunities of, you know, where they can get the best training, so.
And we're actually hoping in the fall, the community development department's done a great job on, on getting houses. And we have the ability possibly to do some training. We already started to do some training in some of the properties off of, of park. We're hoping maybe to, if everything lines up, we're hoping maybe to do some live burn training in the fall. And that'd be another opportunity where other departments would be coming into the city, working with us to do some live fire training, which we don't get a lot of chance to do. So we're, we're hoping we're gonna be able to get there. There's a lot of hoops you gotta go through, but with the consortium's help, I'm, I'm pretty confident we're gonna be able to pull it off.
Terrific.
Is that something the public can come and watch?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'd have it, it'd be, it'd be well-publicized in advance, let people know, especially with it, where it's at in the traffic. But yeah, the road would be closed down, and usually you put up barriers so that the public would be able to stand back and, and watch what we're doing.
I mean, yeah, I saw the guys working at that, the house on Park Street next to it.
Yeah, just the last week, they were doing some searching, basic search and rescue stuff, nothing that was destructive yet, but we're hoping to, there's, there's a lot of regulations you have to follow, a lot of cleanup you have to do on the house to make it able to burn. But we're, we're gonna keep working on that with, with Mona's help, and hopefully we'll get there, you know, maybe in the, in the fall or early spring.
As long as there's no asbestos or lead.
The part that's gonna hamper us is probably how close it is to the river, but we might not be able to.
Yeah, you want to set the river on fire.
Yeah, well, we might not be able to completely burn it to the ground, but we will be able to do some, you know, we're hoping at least to do some burning inside the, the structure, just maybe not all the way to a, to an ash pile, but we'll see how it, how it turns out.
Fingers crossed.
See what, see what the neighbors think, too.
We like to burn down the abandoned houses.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent. Thank you for the, for the annual report. Thank you. Next item is the Public Safety Committee Work Plan Update. I think, Councilor Cotton, you're gonna provide an update on that?
Yes, I would love to, since I have the dubious distinction of being the only public safety committee member that's here. So basically, the work, the council work plan, as you've heard from Chief Bailey, the fire department, you know, has, you know, given us a lot of information regarding the training. Of course, there's ongoing negotiations with the IFF for the current contract, the wildland evaluations, and there'll be some community education coming out in, I believe, late June on that. And he also gave the update on the, the replacement apparatus. The naloxone distribution program for the fire department, there will be some guidelines, like during certain hours, I believe, or when the crew is available to dispense that. And there is no age limit, to be honest, because the Washington State Standing Order for people to have access to this includes school-aged children. So potentially, this can be received by anybody, so. Other things going on, the interim chief, Horace, is, you know, they've definitely completed some ongoing issues, including the LEMAP review, the sunny side in Yakima jail contracts, the evidence room construction, and then, of course, purging of evidence and inventory will begin once the room is completed. There's some work on parking ordinance and policy updates regarding the purging and scanning of paper records. We'll, we've been having some great discussions, trying to address community concerns with areas of speeding in residential areas, of course, the ongoing e-motorcycle and e-bike community discussions are definitely something we're, we're continuing on an ongoing basis. And I think, right now, that's all I basically have on, on kind of what, what things we're working on.
Excellent. Councilor Johnson?
Yes, sir. Are there any ordinances that are in the works related to e-bikes, even if you haven't gone into it very far yet? I'm just curious if that's on the table, or is it other kinds of work that's being done on that?
I think that, I think that chief might be moseying on up here, but there's definitely some laws in the books. It's kind of also what the prosecutor's gonna be doing with regards the juveniles. They will not prosecute if they're under sixteen. And depending on some of the, the status of some of these rigs, is that they may have to have a driver's license, they have a VIN, you know, they can enforce traffic codes for that, too.
So, Mayor, council members, to answer your question in the short, yes, we are working on something. We're looking at different ordinances, we're comparing state law. One of the things we're running into is, these are classified as motor vehicles if they're over seven hundred and fifty watts, which, then there, we're having to address it under an RCW for any traffic laws. As council member Cotton mentioned, there's some issues with the court system that we're working through. So that's one of the things that we're addressing through myself and, and Attorney Burke, and we're hoping to have something to public safety in the near future. We just have a lot to work through on that, but it is in the works, and right now, we're working with Public Works and trying to figure out the best way to address the issues that we're having, such as these devices being operated on the roadway thing, or roadway sidewalks, things like that. So we're gonna be starting to apply the use of the RCW for those that are operating on sidewalks, particularly center, downtown, things like that. So there's a lot in the works for it. I do hope to have something to public safety to present. My hope is in July, late July.
Councilor Benson?
I had a citizen ask me today about kids on e-scooters. He was, he was concerned that his kid had heard that he couldn't, he couldn't ride a, his scooter around. Is that, is that also something that, that you guys are focusing on?
That is something we are focusing on. Right now, we have a current ordinance on the e-scooters and the Class one, two, and three bikes. Our big focus is on those, the dirt bike-looking motorcycles, those are classified motor vehicles. They are giving us, they're the ones that are wreaking havoc over, over and throughout our community and, and both communities. So those, we are going to be addressing the issue as a whole. We might end up tweaking the current ordinance considerably on the Class one, two, and threes and the e-scooters because they, just because of the way it's worded, when it was, when it was originally written, from me looking back at it, it wasn't the problem that we see today. We were kind of ahead of times, and now this has been an issue that has just kind of blown up on us. And I think it's something that we do need to consider and things like that. Now, like for e-motocycles, the one thing is they are classified as motor vehicles, you have to have a license, you have to have a motorcycle endorsement and all that stuff, which means I can impound it. E-motocycles or the e-scooters, the Class one, two, and three bikes are a little different, and that would have to be addressed through the ordinance, which it gets kind of complicated. So I wanna simplify things and make it very understandable for everybody in the community.
In the meantime, the, our communications group has updated the website that has really a lot of information about e-bike and e-scooter safety and the different classes and everything. So you can find it under government, public safety, and the police department page, or you can just search for it, and you'll, there's a lot of information there. But, so this topic will happen again, as you mentioned, during public safety, probably later July.
I think we have it scheduled for the July fifteenth timeframe, or mid-July meeting, just to have a discussion at public safety and then go from there. But we did do a big push on social media today with some stuff. And then, as stated, we updated and kind of just reviewed a lot of the laws, and it's on our website now to just refer people to, to go, this is what the requirements are, because that seems to be the biggest issue, is you can buy these things and out of a box, and technically, you have to go get it registered, and that's causing problems, because it's not being done.
I, I do have one more question about this real quick. Do we have?
I, I do have one more question about this real quick. Uh, do we have, um, records of, of injuries or, um, uh, bystanders who've been hurt by, by these vehicles at this point? Do we have numbers like that?
I don't have the numbers offhand. Um, we've had one person email us about one where it wasn't called in to either us or the Fire Department because we both checked our records. We've had a few other minor injuries or bumps. The biggest problem is, is people aren't calling us. They're emailing us about it. And it's after the fact.
Or putting it on social media.
Or putting it on social media. And so I can't fix the issue at hand immediately if I'm finding out about it days later or the, you know, later that night. So I do encourage the community to call us, call nine one one, let us and the Fire Department respond, especially if there is injury. Um, if somebody gets knocked down, that seems to be the biggest concern of just the safety, especially them coming around the corners on the center and, you know, people walking and almost getting hit or getting hit and bumped. But then they email us instead of actually calling us.
So.
But I can run some numbers for you.
Well, I'd, I'd be curious about that. I, I know that there are probably very few people in Snoqualmie who are not hermits, who have not had moments when they've been terrified by, by one of these, uh, bikes. But you, so you're saying it would be appropriate for people to call nine one one if there's a kid tearing around unsafely around other people?
I encourage everybody to call us so that we can respond because I may not be, I may not have an officer sitting right there or around the corner. They might, you know, they could be downtown and have to respond up to somewhere on the parkway or vice versa. But if you call nine one one, dispatch will put it, it also creates a call for us to keep track of what is actually happening. Where our hotspots are, things like that, where we're having the most issues. It also helps the Fire Department as well, because if there's injuries, then we can communicate back and forth and kind of identify that for when, you know, not only y'all have questions, but others have questions as well. So I encourage everybody to call nine one one. That has been my biggest push. When I do see an email that comes through, I'm like, please let us know at the time. Pick up the phone and call us. We will respond. Um, you know, our motto is no calls too small. We're going to go there. So I, I just have to know about it in order for us to go there. And you know, we're dealing with other calls for service or other things. So it may not be something that we're addressing at that very moment and then something happens.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other report for Public Safety Committee?
That's it.
Thank you. Is there a report for Community Development Committee?
Uh, no report.
All right. Thank you.
At least I don't think, no, no report.
Okay. Um, next is A B twenty five dash zero six eight. Six year transportation improvement program. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and the motion?
Yeah. Uh, this agenda bill presents the city's six year transportation improvement plan for the period twenty twenty six through twenty thirty one. The six year plan is updated annually following public hearing and council approval. The tip will be submitted to Wash Dot on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And, uh, the proposed motion is to, uh, move to approve resolution number seventeen twenty, adopting the six year transportation improvement program for the period twenty twenty six through twenty thirty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
We move by Councilor Benson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. And is there any public comment regarding this? And no one is in the chambers at this point for public comment. So moving on, council, is there any discussion? We do have, um, our C I P manager, Dylan Gamble available for any questions. Councilor Benson.
So just to nutshell it, make sure that I totally understand this. I've, I've seen it several times already. The point of this document is to encapsulate what we're doing. What we, what we have, what we plan to do and what we maybe aspirationally would like to do. And, and is, and, and we need to get things on this list so that we can uh, access potential funds as they arise in future years.
Uh, I think that's a good summary. The only things I'd add are that it's a state requirement. So if we didn't approve this, they might hold it over our head, not give a state funding for transportation projects. Not listed or not, if we didn't even have a stip, they'd definitely be, uh, checking in with us on that. So that's one, that's the biggest one from my end. It's always about uh, making sure the funding is locked up. And the other one is just as you said, it's a way to showcase the six year transportation efforts that we might be going through, whether they are funded, potentially funded, uh, or ambitious and maybe outside of, um, the city's jurisdiction, so to speak. In the tip, we have it organized in a different colorways. So that kind of is my way of helping kind of guide the document a bit. The green showcasing that it's in our C I P, our transportation section of our nonutility C I P. If it's blue, that means we don't have it funded yet, but it's likely to be a city project. If it's orange or yellow, as you might see it, it's, uh, outside of our jurisdiction or primarily outside of our jurisdiction. And so those are the main, I think that's the big takeaway. It's required annually. So we do this every year, unlike, uh, comprehensive plans, which are done longer term. The C I P we do over two years along with our budget. It's a little bit out of sequence in that sense, but this is how it's written in the state law.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, uh, normally, um, in, in the pastures when we've done this, I feel like, uh, there's been a lot of discussion of moving things around and stuff, but looking through it, I go, yeah, this is, it's pretty much what we've been talking about for the last few years of trying to get some of these things done. So I'm very happy with it. I do have two questions. The first is, um, does this document need to, or should it, uh, interface at all with the transportation impact fee schedule?
The, so yes, in a sense, so when the, I have sent this document, the past one that's approved, and we'll share this one with Mona. Um, and that can go into the impact fees. They, this was sent to them, to the team that's working on uh, the transportation back fees. It also is pretty tied into our, you, our nonutility C I P, which has actual dollars we're intending to spend in the next few years. In some sense, this document is kind of a shorter term version of some of our system plans that we have, but with a very different objective, um, and a very minimized focus. That's maybe getting into the weeds there, but, uh, yes, so just that. Yes and no. It should, it does impact it. It gets there. Some of these projects are not going to be included in a transportation impact fee.
But it doesn't have to be a one to one thing.
Yeah, I think the transportation impact fee program has actually metrics to try to calculate that fee appropriately based on a bunch of things that I'm actually super familiar with. Um, so I am happy to look into it more on how that translates, but yes, this information was sent over.
And then, uh, Mayor, the other thing is, uh, for the millionth time about the, um, uh, intersection, Snoqualmie Parkway and Southeast ninety, Southeast Ninety Ninth. Uh, I, I think that I like the way this is phrased because it's just about, uh, improvements. And sure, maybe there need to be improvements there, uh, rather than the specifics of, uh, the, the plan as my understanding is, as it currently exists. So anyway, that'll be a discussion to have when it comes closer to time. Uh, my understanding is that there are alternative, uh, suggestions out there that exist from, uh, the hospital, but, um, uh, that would not be at Ninety Ninth Street, but would be a, a roundabout that's further up the parkway. But as it stands, uh, either way, uh, Ninety Ninth is still where that interchange project begins. It's still a very important spot. So still supportive of having that on there, especially as it is written, not specifying whether it's a light or a roundabout.
Any other comments? All right, moving to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous in this six year transportation improvement program is approved. Thank you. Is there any further report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
None that I recall.
Right. How about Finance Administration Committee?
No report.
All right. Brings me to the mayor's report. So a couple of things. First of all, um, congratulations to our local resident Carol Peterson. Um, her husband, the, the council chambers is named after Charles Peterson, who was a previous mayor for two terms and then a long term council member. Anyway, their home, which is just right up the block, was designated as a, um, local landmark from, by King County. And so it's called the English Peterson House because it actually just reached a hundred years old and there's only been two residents in there, the English family and the Peterson family. So anyway, according to Sarah Martin of King County, this is the only um, home that has been designated a landmark in Snoqualmie. There are other buildings that have been, but this is the only residence. So that's pretty spectacular. Um, I would like to thank, um, two of our long-term employees for their dedication and service to our community. They will be retiring this month. We have Sergeant Craig Miller has announced his retirement after thirty years of service in law enforcement. Um, he has proudly served the Snoqualmie Police Department for the last eleven years with compassion and dedication to our community. And he was instrumental in training officers, managing special events and providing a depth of knowledge that came from his years of service. He will be missed and he, we wish him well, um, in his next chapter of life. And there will be a reception for Sergeant Miller on June thirtieth at three P M. At the police station. And the next one is Lieutenant Robert Laswell will be retiring from the Fire Department. He was hired by the Snoqualmie Fire in April of two thousand and three. For many years, he served as a senior firefighter and acting officer on shift, um, being promoted to lieutenant in December of twenty twenty three. And during this time with the department, he mainly was responsible for managing the department's P P E or bunker gear as well as wildland program. Lieutenant Laswell was also instrumental in training new firefighters. He loved working with new firefighters and passing on his wealth of knowledge to the next generation. He leaves with over twenty two years of service to the city. We're excited for him as he hangs up his gear and gets to spend time with his family. Um, his last day will be June twenty sixth. And the Fire Department will be holding an open house send off for him at the station from twelve thirty to two. Lunch will be, will provided to the city staff and council. So hopefully you can join us. Um, there's several different events that are happening this week. We have the outdoor adventure jamboree at the Meadowbrook Interpretative Center on June twenty fifth. It has fun outdoor related activities, especially designed for children ages three to twelve. And then we had the big truck day on the twenty sixth from ten to noon at Centennial Fields Park, um, geared for kids ages one to ten. And then there's also Green Snoqualmie event on the June twenty seventh from nine to noon. Um, spending a couple of times pulling and cutting and digging, um, invasive, invasive weeds. So it's great work that helps keep our native forest thrive. And this will be at the corner of Silent Creek and McCullough. And one last thing, you'll start seeing some activity at the Snoqualmie Valley Health. Um, they receive their clearing and grading permits. So you will start seeing some site clearing and anyway, so they're excited about that. And we're excited for the new, for that project. With that, is there any commission or committee liaison reports? Councilor Cotton.
A quick question. Is there a date set for like groundbreaking for the hospital?
I'm not sure that they've set the date. No.
No, not yet. Okay. And then if I have a liaison report, as you guys all expect, I know.
Keep talking to Mike. I hear you. You have what?
Uh, yes, I do have a liaison report if nobody else wants to share. Uh, this is from, uh, this month's, uh, S E A Public Health briefing on June second. They have appointed a new director of public health, uh, Dr. Sandra Valenzano. She's, uh, from the, uh, Epidemic Intelligent Unit out of Georgia. It comes very highly recommended and she's starting immediately. Um, also a couple of things, um, going on, uh, across the the state and the, and the county. June twenty fifth, as there's a conference on, um, substance use disorder, opioid use at Green River College. Um, while there's a decrease in fentanyl deaths across the country, um, the vulnerable community here in Washington still has a higher percentage, um, of people being affected. And Washington State still leads the nation in deaths related to fentanyl. There was, uh, beginning of the month, um, the regional gun violence. King County got a visit from the U S Citizens United, uh, with, and were hosted by Kent P D, uh, doing some public education and handing out free locks boxes, uh, lock boxes. They had giveaways for that in various cities. Since there's, um, no federal funds anymore for this particular program, um, the office was done away with. Um, it prevents extension of any progress, uh, projects. So this will be left to local communities and groups. About two hundred and fifty thousand Washington residents will lose Medicaid, uh, with the new federal cuts, um, Apple Care will suffer. H I V prevention funding, the Ryan White bill, all at risk. Dollars will stop flowing, which will result in about a six month chaos. Meds may be stopped. Funding, um, as far as any kind of block grants is, are going to have to be through the state going forward. The, uh, L B G T Q binary gender resources are also affected. Concern about suicide rates, um, the county doesn't provide funding for surgery. Um, and the feds are putting pressure on hospitals to stop, to stop surgeries, to, um, uh, cut, um, uh, dollar costs. And just an annual reminder, um, thirty seven drownings in the last year for cold water exposures in the county. Time for the communities to step up and, and spread out the reminders. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other updates? Council committees, liaisons? Okay, thank you. Well, moving on, we have, um, two executive sessions pursuant to R C W forty two dot three zero dot one one zero one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to potential litigation. The first one lasting approximately ten minutes. Those attending would be City Attorney Burke, Acting City Administrator, um, Finance Director Drew Bootay. And then the second one will be thirty minutes and that had the same people as well as interim chief Gary Horace. So with that, um, we would anticipate coming back at eight thirty. Um, however, no action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session and recording of the meeting will cease. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which will reflected in the meeting minutes. And I believe we do have, um, one council member that is online. And so we will need, we do have an executive session Zoom that we'll need to get on. So with that, we can, it is now seven forty one and we will stop the recording. And we will switch over to the Zoom executive session Zoom. Thank you.